Okay. We're going to open the February 4th meeting of the Selectmen. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. I have an appointment at 7:10. Are you sure he's going to be here at 7:10?
I'm not sure he's going to be here. He knows to be here at 7:10.
Okay.
But whether he'll be or not, I have no idea.
All right. So why don't we do the meeting minutes of December 14th and January 22nd? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Did you have any comments, questions, changes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to correct the address for the all alcohol common vic license for Home with Suites by Hilton. And it's now it's not 65 River Road, it's 60 River Road, correct?
Right. The attorney who filed the application for it put down 65, which was the trailers address for everything River Bridge.
Yeah.
I didn't know the difference. It went through all the different departments. No one had any feedback on it. I had dealt with it enough, but then it got caught. And we're just got caught by the manager. He asked for it to be corrected. The ABCC is acknowledging they're going to change their records to 60. And so then you should change your license to 60. So that's what they display.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'd be violating our own rules? That it's due in February 11th at noon?
It's actually due January 21st.
Ah, all right. We missed that one. Okay.
Yep, we did.
All right.
But I think there's an awful lot of people who have missed it.
28 last week from Tricia.
And next is to finalize the notes from our coffee talk on January 17th.
So the only two changes that I made, that I sent back around was toe became town.
Mm-hmm.
And in the beginning where we had talked about the strong chief, weak chief, I just noted that there wasn't concern by those at the meeting, but it did not reflect the town's opinion.
Right.
And then that was it. Everything else stayed the same.
Okay. Do we need to approve these?
I think so.
Okay.
Are they minutes or are they what I mean?
Well, it's something that's going to go up on the town website or Facebook.
Do you want it on my town government as like a document after the fact? Yeah, because we put the other one up there too. So people can reference it. You can. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Prioritize the FY '20 state funding requests. What have we got here? I think we have three of them. For?
Yep. Thanks.
That's fulfilled.
Didn't we already send over this list or?
I think we did not because we wanted to give people time to respond again.
Right. They actually transcribed this call today and asked for it to be sent tomorrow if you prioritize tonight.
Okay. Electric line power, electric power line installation for agricultural?
Right.
If that's a new one. Highway. Is this for the solar?
Yeah. It looks it.
Solar for the highway barn.
The salt shed is on there too.
Oh, back on this one?
No. No. You haven't got one yet.
Okay. And the 1870 Town Hall is looking for money for restoring plaster painting historical circular stairway, resetting historical historic granite steps and repairing entry portico, replenishing, refinishing wood floors on first floor, repair, paint plaster walls and upstairs closet.
Are we putting all of them forth or are we picking and only putting a few forth?
I think if there's just one or two or maybe three that we want to put as the first priority.
They seem to like to choose last year too, but we might want to
Right.
Put them in order and then send them all over.
Well, you can send the whole entire list, correct?
Well, yes, but you should prioritize them.
Yeah.
And then if they have funding vehicles mid-year, sometimes they can stick them into different bond bills and stuff, but.
Right. Got the van. Construct the wellness trail.
No, that was your suggestion. That didn't come from recreation.
Oh, it didn't come?
No.
They weren't ready to do that, I don't think.
Okay.
Unless we wanted to send over, I mean, that was a much larger number than initially.
Right.
But I don't remember exactly what the number was.
It was over 200,000, I think, the actual bids.
The low bid was like 220,000.
Right. The water concerns at the library.
There's no number on that and it never came from the library or Dave, so.
Right. So.
Well.
And historical on that page, and then that's the last one we have that's new.
Money for the Bullard House.
The van and the salt shed.
I would say and the solar.
And the solar.
Does that sound good to you too?
Agreed. Yeah, it was the for the garage.
The solar.
Yep, the salt shed and then, yeah, the van.
Okay. Those are the three.
You just have different orders.
I don't care.
No, no big deal.
No big deal, yeah.
No priority, just those three.
Those three are top priority.
Okay.
Okay.
Share the rest of them also?
Sure.
Okay.
Probably take the ones off that we've already fulfilled though.
Right.
Right?
Yes. 7:10.
All right. Walter, did you want to speak to us this evening?
Okay. Hey, thanks for sliding me into this last minute vacancy. Appreciate it. I had submitted to you folks a petition to ask you to sponsor an article on to vote in chapter, whatever it is for the so-called weak by a chief. So I'm here to answer any questions on it, but I just wanted to give you a little brief history on it and why we think it's important. There's, this was a petition for an actual article a few years ago. And I want you to look at the names on there and see that there's fire chiefs, police chiefs, former policemen, firemen, rescue squad leaders, town clerks, virtually everyone had played an important role in town government up until that time. And they didn't just sign it because they wanted it up for discussion, they fully supported it. The reason is, and that was tabled, by the way, unanimously, you were there, you probably know that. But the reason this came about, we went from a board of fire engineers, which was one of only 10 in the state at that time, to control that we felt that we needed more oversight over a town agency. So we had a study done by MRI and they came up with this new fire department that we have now with a chief and the way it's set up.
Yeah.
And he's been a strong chief, but if we're going to change again, we'd like to go to a weak chief. And I want to tell you why we need this. This is just one example. I've got to tell you about this. When we had the board of fire engineers, Solomon Pond was built, Solomon Pond Mall. And in the wording of the law that stated it, we were to share oversight with Marlborough. Well, I went over and talked to the mayor of Marlborough in '05 and the fire chief also attended the meeting in Marlborough, and they both decided there was no reason for Berlin to show up unless they called him. Five years later, we looked at it, and I just want, and this is documented, that we wouldn't have to be going to Solomon Pond Mall today if we had a, if we had a weak chief and proper oversight by the Selectmen. But in that time, they made 1,556 runs, seven and a half miles of run, 11,670 miles at high speed through two densely populated areas to Solomon Pond Mall and back. And then the chief Kyle, police chief Kyle, even said after that, in the presence of the rescue squad chief, that he never saw a time when Berlin was needed at the mall. The police chief at that time talked to the Marlborough police and he cut way back on their responses to the mall. Denny Bartlett, the rescue squad chief, just stopped going because he had an agreement with Kyle that we're no need of it. But that's, that's just an example of why we need elected people oversight overseeing these. And I want to stress that everybody involved is a great citizen, they're fine people, they're honest, everybody was, but it's a systemic issue, particularly with public safety, that kind of thing. So you need oversight. Look at our police department. You have oversight there. There's no harm done, but at least you have oversight and they're, they're answerable to elected officials. So that's the reason we would like to see a weak chief from now on, the next appointment.
So why do you think going to a weak chief would stop the calls going over?
Would stop what?
Well, I mean, you cited that in 2005 that we weren't going over and then in 2010, so I'm curious as to why you think going backwards to a weak chief would.
Oh, it's too late now, Peg.
No, but I'm asking why. I mean.
If we had a weak chief, if we didn't have the board of fire engineers and Selectmen were felt responsible for overseeing it, I think that when I went over and I was going to bring a letter, but you don't need all that stuff, I have a letter that I gave to the Selectmen saying how Mayor Morrow at that time said, "Just continue it, we don't need it." But the board of fire engineers who were virtually, they were totally autonomous, there's no way that they were going to allow a reduction in calls and the numbers. And just furthermore, in my discussion with Selectman Durant of Hudson, 30 years on the board, he was chairman at the time, he said, "Walter, we could have discussed something that worked out, something like Marlborough, Solomon Pond Mall," but it didn't happen. Why? I mean, we should be working into town, elected people should, elected people should oversee this, we should sit down and figure out ways to do it cheaper. So if it doesn't change anything, I say do it just for the idea of good government. Because elected people should oversee and hold accountable and do due diligence on our town, on our town government.
So do you think you have the support for a weak chief?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
My talk around town, I mean, we were talking about it at the store one morning. I ran home, typed that up, brought it up there, and I got those signatures, you know, and one fell swoop. But I think there's a lot of, if they know the issue, Chris, I think it's there. If it's explained, reason why and why we need it. I think I heard Peg say that there's a majority of towns have the strong chief.
That's correct.
But I have a record, it's four or five years old, but it shows 132 towns with a strong chief.
There's more than that. I mean, that was four or five years ago. There's more than that. There's only been a couple that have tried to go backwards and they've failed.
And the trend is to go to strong chief.
Correct.
Not to go to weak chief.
Well, again, that's, that's what you get when you're on a fire, the fire department. That's the political pull of it.
But here's my concern. Once again, I mean, as we talked about at our town chat, that there's two main differences for strong chief and weak chief.
Mm-hmm.
One, I want to fire you, so I have to do so for just cause with a hearing compared to you're at will, get out. Two, you know, don't you love that? Get out.
I wouldn't do a job like that. I would absolutely not take a job like that.
Well, you're at will. You're at will. You're at will in just about any state, any job in Massachusetts, you're at will.
Our chief of police has a job like that.
Two, the strong chief has the ability to hire and fire without consent of the board.
Right.
The weak chief would need to come to the board.
Right, right.
So given those two are the main differences between strong and weak chief, how does that back your argument that that would decrease the amount of calls that Berlin would need to go to or not go to? And I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well.
I'm not saying either way, which side of the fence I'm sitting on, but if those are the two items that make the difference.
Yeah.
How does your issue fall into one of those two categories?
If you had a weak chief back then, and when the Selectmen knew that they could interpret the agreement, the law with Solomon Pond and the agreement with Marlborough, that Berlin need not go unless called by the Marlborough Fire Department, that would have saved us that two round trips to California on the, on the fire trucks. And also, there's a good probability we wouldn't be going down to Highland Commons also. So what you say is right on one hand, Peg, but by controlling the chief and oversee it, there's a lot more to it, how, how the department responds, where they respond.
But that has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with stronger or weaker.
Anything to do with stronger or weaker chief.
It doesn't.
If you have a weak chief and you respond into calls you don't need to, that, that has a lot to do with it. If it was a weak chief, you call them up and you say no.
Okay.
And I'd like to see those figures on the amount of towns that have it, by the way, the trend.
You can certainly go look them up on the web. They're, they're pretty available.
So is it our consensus that we take this under advisement at this point?
Yeah.
We have to make decisions on the warrant for?
Right. By next week, right?
Next Monday.
Yeah.
But this wasn't actually on the agenda, so we weren't, we shouldn't be making a decision that tonight.
Okay. Then it would be a little late for him to go get signatures if he was going to do that for the citizens' petition though.
I'm just saying that it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, we, yeah, we won't do a citizens' petition. If you people don't feel you want to throw it out there for discussion.
Okay.
Then, you know, I won't pursue it.
Okay.
I just think it's good government to do it.
All right. Then we'll, we will take this up
Okay.
On next Monday.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. It's 7:20 and we have an appointment with the IT committee? Are you the IT committee?
That would be me.
All right.
So I know that I haven't met everyone on the Select Board. My name is Tim Pierce and I'm speaking on behalf of the town IT committee tonight.
Okay.
Hi, Tim and Peg.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Chris.
You and I.
Yeah.
So the Berlin IT committee was established in the fall of 2017 to advise the town on all IT related matters, software licensing, website management, anything along those lines. We have been meeting with Chief Galvin, who's been spearheading the website replacement project in his role as acting IT coordinator. And one of the questions that has come up is what the domain name for the town website should be. We currently have a website at townofberlin.com, but one of the questions that arose was, is that the appropriate place to put our website, is there, what difference does it make and what sort of issues do we want to consider? So the IT committee examined the issue and our recommendation is that we should have a domain name in the .gov domain rather than .com. And so I came tonight to discuss that. I don't know if the Select Board has any questions right away or if you just want me to keep talking for a while or.
What difference would it make?
The chief difference that it makes is that the .gov domain is administered by the General Services Administration of the United States Government specifically for the purpose of hosting United States cities, state and municipal government sites. And in order to get a .gov domain, you have to have, you have authorization from the highest ranking official of the government that you're setting up a site for, in other words, the Select Board.
So what about the towns around us? Because when I go to look, it's townofboilston.com, townofclinton.com, townofhudson.com.
Actually, it's not.
That's how I've been finding information.
The town of Clinton is at clintonma.gov. Hudson, Hudson is .org, but of the 351 town websites in the Commonwealth, the top level, the top level domains have 128 towns in .gov. 81 towns are using a .us domain. 80 towns are using .org and 45 are using .com. About two-thirds of the towns around us in the immediate area are using .gov. About half of the rest are using .us and half of the rest are using .com, which is more or less the breakdown that we have here.
Do you?
So a little more than a third of all towns in the state are using .gov. The rest of them fall down, fall into a smaller breakdown.
You said you did look at things in order to make the decision at IT? What kind of things did you look at?
Well, this, the examining what the differences were between the domains, for most top level domains, it makes almost no difference where you put them, if it's a .com or .org or .net or the, these distinctions used to mean something on the internet, but these days they're pretty much all the same. .gov is unusual in that it requires a registration from, it requires authorization from the town government. So you have some confidence that the site actually belongs to the town that you're talking about, that it's not an unofficial website set up by a random person. Anybody in the town could register townofberlinmass.com and set up a site that looks really official but isn't really it. Or if the town registration ever lapsed, somebody could purchase it during the period when it hasn't been renewed and set up their own site that maybe looks exactly like this one or just is filled with pranks or anything like that. That's not something that they could do with a .gov domain.
Did you talk to the department heads?
No, we haven't discussed this with the department heads. This is our.
That was my next question, actually, just to see how it would affect the people who work here.
Well, or do you get a general consensus too from people in the town?
And, and I mean, what kind of things do they have to change? Is it a hardship? You know, I don't know.
You know.
I don't know. I, I would be happy to discuss it with the department heads, but I, I find it unlikely that the committee's recommendation would change. I would be happy to discuss it with department heads to find out what their concerns are. But one way or the other, the content, the, the structure of the website is going to change. Pages within the website are going to move to new locations. So there, that is, that is a change that is, is going to happen regardless of whether it's at townofberlin.com or berlinma.gov.
Yeah. Hopefully, it would be easy to find things then.
Yeah, that is, that is the goal.
Yep.
We'd be, we would be happy to discuss it with the department heads and find out if they have any concerns, but I think that the committee's recommendation is likely to remain the same.
I think it's, I think it's only fair.
Sure.
I mean, you might find out something that you didn't think of as far as, you know, the work that the different departments perform.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I would like that. I mean, I'd also like to see, so I'm assuming that you'll leave the other site up for duality for a period of time or if somebody goes to townofberlin.com, does it automatically, is it going to move them?
Our recommendation would be that we keep the original domain to redirect to the new one.
For how long?
However, along the town wants it.
I think you would find that things would move over relatively quickly. This is not that unusual. And part of the reason that so many sites are not .gov is really the standard came into being in 2012. So a lot of these sites, including ours, would preexist that date. Anyone who's really looking at it now would do .gov.
From the IT committee's perspective, this is a more of a security issue than anything else. And so our recommendation would probably remain the same even if it poses a hardship or a degree of confusion to the department heads. And we would be happy to work with them on any issues that they're facing with respect to this, but our recommendation is likely to remain the same.
Well, and with respect, I don't think it's fair for you to sit here and say that your decision is going to remain the same because inside my head, I'm thinking, then why are you going to bother to talk to anybody because your decision isn't going to change?
It's a.
That's my inside voice that is now my outside voice.
This is our recommendation. And I can't, I can't say that the committee's recommendation won't change, but I, my, from the discussions that we've had, I think it's unlikely that it would, that it would change as a result of talking, finding that there were issues posed by the departments, department heads. I don't think that there's, I, I'm more than happy to talk to them, find out what their issues are and.
Or if they have any.
Revisit the issue and to see if it, if there's anything that we need to change.
Right. Because I'd like for you to share them with the analysis that you did. I mean, I can't see, I'm going to pick on June because she's not here, just walking in and going, hey, we're going to change it from .com to .gov. She'll be like, okay. So I think as you go out to talk to them, you need to present more information rather than, hey, we're just thinking of changing, do you think it'll cause any hardships? Because this is your world.
Mm-hmm.
Those folks, that's not their world. So you might have to walk them step by step of, this is where it exists, this is why, this is, you know, how come we need to do it, communities around us, et cetera. So you need to give them a complete picture and not just, hey, we're going to change, do you mind?
Okay.
I do have to tell you that having worked in data security, typically you don't involve staff in issues of data security, which this really is. Our site was actually down for 36 hours during that time, well, well, they, because we lapsed on the registration, during that time, anything could have happened to that site.
Why did we lapse on the registration?
It happens. It didn't get, it didn't get re-upped when it was supposed to, so it was down for 36 hours. Do you know what could have happened in 36 hours? Berlin, townofberlin.com could have become anything.
Mm-hmm.
And granted, you know, maybe nobody's going to step in or nobody's going to notice, but if they do, then you have a problem.
Well, there might be just something that would put people's minds at ease that have changes that will happen because of this. Maybe the decision would be tempered as far as making sure that it's redirected for a year or two or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or, or, I don't know what else, because I'm not an IT person.
There are any number of things that we'd be happy to, like I said, that we'd be happy to, be happy to work with the department heads on, or if there's an additional step that we need to take to make sure that that's a graceful transition for them.
Exactly.
We would, these are, these are conversations that we want to have with respect to moving the website anyway.
Right.
As far as the, as the name of the, the top level name of the website goes, to the extent that it's a security decision, that is likely to have a, that, that takes a higher priority over most organizational decisions and most issues of organizational change. So the, we would, we would want to make sure not to compromise the town's security because it turns out to be inconvenient for one department head or another. We want to work with them to find something, to find a solution that makes sense for them, but something that doesn't compromise the security for the town.
Well, would you be able to come back and give us feedback, either here or by email or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just educate and communicate. That's all we ask.
Sure.
So that, you know, everyone is on the same page. So all of a sudden, it's not, oh, look at this new fancy website, where did this come from? Oh, we've had, oh, I didn't know. Yeah, just want to get rid of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool.
I would suggest like the people who have offices here in the building, right in this hallway and public safety if necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Please address the board, please.
Okay.
So, Tim was being nice about what happened, but for 36 hours, you didn't have control of the domain name.
Yeah, I understand.
That means that anybody could have purchased it to rehash that. That meant that once they purchased it, they could create pstone@townofberlin.com, chiefgalvin@townofberlin.com, selectboard@townofberlin.com, lwaysaki@townofberlin.com. selectboard@townofberlin.com, lwaysaki@townofberlin.com. Any email during that period that was sent to you would now go to this bad actor. Your recovery email for your social media would now be the property of that person. This is standard operating procedure. There's a reason behind it, and I strongly urge the board not to adopt a .com domain. This is speaking as 25 years as a telecommunications engineer. This would be a mistake to do this.
Thank you. We're on to fire an EMS department. Paul, do you want to come down? Come on down.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Hi.
The gentleman with the beard, the mustache.
The good-looking one?
Yeah, well, that's Jay. I just don't know him.
I thought that's why I brought them.
Yeah, why don't you introduce them?
That's why I brought them. So I saw on the agenda, you had something about the chain of command there. As you know, that we've had some changes and are going to be seeing some more changes. Deputy Chief Pelletier resigned due to personal and professional reasons, leaves a big hole, as you would expect in a department. And then my departure at the end of the year, to some, it might leave a big hole, to others, maybe not. But anyway, I wanted to make sure that you knew that the charge that I was given when I came here was to develop a succession plan for the department to move forward and the people to have room to move up and et cetera. So we've done that and we've worked together really hard. These guys do all the work. They just make me... I'm just arm candy. So they're really... They work really hard and they do a great job. So I wanted to bring them in so that you could see that the succession plan that we built is working and that the citizens of Berlin and the administration of Berlin will see no difference in services from the Berlin Fire and EMS Department, that they're in good hands. So if I could introduce them so that everybody could see, we have Lieutenant Paulino, and Lieutenant Paulino is one of our full-time staff.
Okay.
Captain Alessi, Assistant Chief Korea, Marshal Litchwell, who you've met a couple of times, Captain Concannon, and Captain Desatelle. This big group here represents over 150 years of fire service experience. They're the folks that are day-to-day out in the street, making us proud and taking care of the people, the citizens and the visitors of the community. So again, when I saw that there were some questions about, you know, the chain of command for the department, here it is. Again, we met with the members of the department tonight, a training session, and updated them as to some of the things that are going on and the process for replacing my position and the committee's meeting tomorrow, I believe. So we're just trying to keep the membership updated. Again, communications is key to everything, so we want to be able to communicate that to you and to the rest of the department and know that you're being taken care of.
Okay. So when you're not here, it's Captain Alessi, Captain Concannon, and Captain Jamie. You're not even going to try his last name.
Assistant Chief Korea is number two right now.
Ah, I was wondering where you were. He just kind of like skipped over you.
No.
All right. So you're number two?
I am.
Well, in charge, number two.
Yes, I am.
All right.
So, yeah, so they all know who to go to for answers when I'm not here, and I'm always available by phone if I'm not in town or whatever. And as has been for the last three years, I'm available to come back at any point in time. So again, that's me having to come back, as I think happened twice. And by the time I got here, anyway, they had it well under control. They're a really good group of people that have been given the, I think, have been empowered to make decisions and are best of the community, and they've done, I think they've done a great job.
And are you all comfortable with all of this for the time being, for the moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And if there's anything you need as far as communication, please let us know.
Thank you. Any more questions for me?
I think it was just the...
That's an open indication, you know.
I didn't ask you.
I know, I know. I noticed you looking past me. That's fine. It's all right, I got you. It's fine.
I think the other things on this particular item is about the screening committee charge and a screening committee member question. So I think...
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have any directives that you would pass on to the screening committee if you had the option?
Again, if you're looking at the interim position, somebody that's going to keep things moving forward, as they are, again, this is a great group. They've got things under control. They do a good job at keeping the EMS system going. We've got our EMS inspection tomorrow for the ambulance service and everything. But they do a great job with training and everything else, keeping it going. So again, it's going to be somebody that can work with you folks and work with the group and keep things moving forward while the main process, I guess, goes forward for the permanent position. And we have some great candidates in the room, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So were we putting the charge on here to just double-check with the board?
Did Brian Duggan ask you for clarification on that? I'm not sure where that came from. You asked for it to be on the agenda.
I don't think so, but if I did, I don't remember why.
Was that me?
Or was it you?
It was probably me. It's usually me. So given Paul's...
You want a deadline for when you wanted names back so you could interview people by mid-February, which is next week, so that if somebody had to give two weeks' notice, that you'd be able to have somebody on board before...
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
...leaves at the end of March or at the beginning of March.
I really think we need to not rush the committee into making a choice. I think they're motivated. I think they want to get this done, but I really don't want to put artificial deadlines on this because the interim chief could end up being there for longer than we think given the market that's out there. So I want them to put as much thought as they need to into getting us solid candidates.
What was your concern, Peg?
Oh, no. Well, that was just, it was timing. And are they just weeding through the stack of folks and saying, here? Or are they weeding through the stack of folks and having them come in for them to do a first pass? Because you can look awesome on a piece of paper.
Yeah. Typically, they would do the first pass also.
So they'll do an interview process as well and then weed more.
They would have in, what, five, six, if there were enough candidates that made sense, and then they weed it down to two or three for us.
To get to us.
Well, the only thing I mentioned to Sharon, because she was asking for some guidance, was that if they narrowed it down and there was only like three qualified candidates, it would be their choice, interview and send forward the ones that you choose to, or you could send the... Do the interviews with us. But that's their choice. That's the committee's choice, the screening committee's choice. I think we'll know more after their meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would love to see them do the interview because they can ask the fire types of questions, the fire chief kinds of questions with the makeup of that. I see more us as your behavioral communication, financial management types of questions.
The other sheet is they can do it in executive session and we cannot, so they can ask more...
Right. Well, it would be finalists if it was to come to us.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can pass that information along to them, but I think it would be nice if perhaps Mary sent an email to the entire screening committee, maybe after their meeting tomorrow, to say, what's up?
Check in on how they're meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just see, because there were, what, 11, 17, 15?
Applicants.
Yeah, there were quite a...
Well, the other thing too is that they are coming, they still are coming, and there's three came in late and another one just came in during this meeting late. Do you want consideration for late applicants for interim chief?
No, we've held it that way. Sorry. Again, you've had time.
If it doesn't work out, we can go back to them?
Well, and if it doesn't work out and if they miss the boat for interim, maybe they'd be interested in full-time come July.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. What was the screening committee member question? Was that it from Sharon?
No, it was a...
Conflict of interest.
It was a question. One of the screening committee members knew several of the candidates, didn't want that to be a problem. And right off the top of my head, my suggestion would be, let's ask Brian Duggan, who's going to be running the search for MRI.
We have internal candidates. It's unlikely that many of the committee do not know.
Correct.
That's a small community.
Well, I mean, this is, if you...
You can certainly ask, but I guess, I mean, you kind of have to throw Sharon out the window for anybody internal. You have to throw George. You have to throw...
Right.
Yeah, you might not have a committee.
Yeah. So do you say, are you saying that, you know, we're...
Well, you know what?
This is okay? I mean, did you see, did that get sent to them too?
It should have.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd pose this...
Just want to make sure you have all the information.
I mean, if you can be fair and partial, then you stay. And if you honestly feel that you can't because you like Tommy over Jimmy, then excuse yourself.
Then abstain on that candidate.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Then we can pass on that information to the member.
But if we tried to get a committee where nobody knew anybody who was applying, we would have a really hard time with that.
Well, I don't know what kind of relationship that, you know, this member had with these people.
A lot of times, George probably had half the people he's been on committees on in school.
That is correct.
So he would half raise them, so.
That is correct. Okay.
All right. So can you pass on that information to Ira? Oops.
Or the committee itself?
What's that?
Yes.
To the entire committee?
Yes.
If they're uncomfortable, they can abstain if they have too close a relationship.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we have so many members on the committee that if one drops, you're still going to have enough.
Yep. All right. Moving on to the MRI executive recruitment contracts. Did you guys get a chance to look them over?
I saw the TA one. I don't know that I saw the fire one.
You sent it to me late in the afternoon. And then you sent it to everybody again late in the afternoon because it wasn't attached originally over the weekend.
Why? I don't know how it couldn't be attached if I was forwarding it.
You got to look at the bottom of page two to see what the order is because it doesn't say on page one.
This is town administrator.
Town administrator. This is the only one that I've got.
They are basically, they are exactly the same.
Yeah. Just the money's different.
Yes.
But we're getting a break, aren't we?
We are getting a little bit of a break. I think we're saving about $1,500, and I believe it's coming off the town administrator one.
I'm assuming it was another 500 because they weren't coming in. That was another...
That was part of the 1,500.
That was part of the 1,500.
Yeah.
Because the original one was, what, 14.3, 14.5?
I thought it was 14.
I'm going to bring my books. I know, I thought one was 14.3 and one was 14.5. I just don't know which one. The TA or the fire.
Motion to approve. We need to move forward.
Seconded.
All right. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about if I just give you the signature page?
So this is...
This is just to initial.
The town administrator one was just one price, 14.5, and then the fire chief one had choices, which is 14.3.
So then that would make sense. Sorry, didn't sign it yet. If they're coming down to... Where am I? 6.5 and 6.5, so that's what, well, 13?
I think it was a $1,300 savings.
Right, and it was originally four. Yeah, so these are $1,500 savings. Because if it was 14.5, they're coming...
Did it come off the TA? That's what I thought it did, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, this one's the TA that's in our hand.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're saying 6.5 and 6.5.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry, I want to get these things out of order here.
Is this the other one?
That's the other one, yeah. Mary, I did not date them. Could you just date them for me?
Yep.
Oh, one of the... Okay, so one of the questions that Brian, who's in charge of the administration of the fire search, he did suggest that we consider increasing the salary by $5,000. He thought that would be more in the ballpark...
To which one?
To, for the fire.
So to 125?
Yes. So it's a consideration. If... I wanted to hear...
This is what we hired them for.
For the suggestion?
Well...
So you're saying yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I mean, kudos to us that we were close, so.
And I would say that that would, I mean, we can figure out where the money, the additional $5,000, is coming from, but it's important to post it in the ad that it's up to that amount, should we have to go that high.
Okay.
Okay? The other question that Alan had asked me about the town administrator's search is the number of forums. And I don't remember, I couldn't remember what we decided at the last meeting when we talked to them. Did we say two?
We wanted one with employees, right, and one with the public.
Or one in the day and one at night, something like that?
Well, yeah, because if you can get, probably you can get the employees during the day and you can get the public at night.
That's right.
That's how I remember it.
Yep.
But I think that...
You're the only one here.
Yep. You're on your own island.
So you're on the spot.
Camera. Swing the camera there, Mr. Bradley.
So, I mean, it doesn't, it really wouldn't matter if there were people from town who wanted to come to the morning one, that'd be fine too.
Right, and that's what we said too.
But I think we just sort of said day and night.
I thought you were just going to open it up and you assumed that the town people, the building people in the building would come during the day and those that couldn't would come in the night.
Right. Okay, just confirming.
That's how I remember it. I might be wrong.
No, two, yeah.
Yep. Okay, I asked those questions. So the next thing was the capital planning committee, the FY '20 capital plan and articles, and that was given to us.
So are folks putting in their articles for these or what is the...
I think it's just a spreadsheet that they...
They don't know what to do.
Well, it'd be nice if right on the capital request form, it said at the bottom, by[1729.45] by the way, this doesn't get you on the warrant, you still need to draft one with a summary.
Right.
But, so, they're still to be maybe fixed next year. But, so, they just gave this tonight and it didn't include council on aging's two capital requests, which for some reason they don't know anything about. So I just sent it to capital. You all approved it and it went with the budget, their council on aging budget, order FinCom. But capital planning doesn't know anything about the van and the software scanner. So I just kind of added it on the bottom there. They know that.
And did the council on aging approve those?
You approved them.
We did.
No, I know we did.
No, no.
You don't know?
I don't know, I don't, no, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, because maybe that's why they're not there. But I would assume.
My guess is that it was just a process. You know, you have new, new people and new processes.
Well, that's what I was hoping.
So everything that's for 2020, we don't, we really don't have any of these articles.
Do we need to send some kind of communication out to these people?
How many communications do you want me to send? But I can.
Well, I, I think we need to ask them to write up their capital articles and clarify because. Apparently, if everybody's not writing up capital articles, then there was an issue with knowing what needed to happen.
If you look at page two.
Either that or rewrite them and I don't think you want to do that.
Uh-uh.
Page two is all school, so instead of having some kind of capital assessment, they are asking for them to be regular old capital articles.
How many of these have we approved? Have we approved all of these?
You wouldn't do the library, you wouldn't do things that you didn't directly appoint. You would do cemetery, library, or school.
Right.
Police, fire. I, I don't know if you actually, I just got this at 6:35, 6:40.
I think we did the pumper truck for.
Oh, we did the fire ones.
Right, and we did, we did police.
And we would have done the highway ones.
But they have not sent them to, or they have sent, no, they have not sent their articles, correct?
That, that's the problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Cemetery has, and your other department heads haven't.
So let's send something out to the department heads and say, please get your articles in for your capital requests.
Yeah, because we rejected the car for the building inspector, but this one's on it too. So I would assume that that needs to come off.
Do you want capital, we told that?
Yeah, I mean, because we did, we voted on it, no car. We're adding to the fleet. So it comes, it needs to come off.
At some point, there needs to be, hopefully the TA can smooth this out, but this process is still not quite working well.
I don't know why, I mean, usually, I don't know, I guess it's still a week away.
Yeah, but.
Would that be why?
I don't think that's why.
No.
I think it's confusion as to the process.
That's all, so they just need to write.
All of them are not here. If it wasn't, at least someone would be here.
All right, well.
So we just write them back in three sentences or less with a summary, please explain why you need X amount of dollars to do X amount of something.
Well, I mean, you just need to make sure they get their articles in to us.
Yeah, because this is just a spreadsheet.
Right. Okay. All right. We're down to new business.
I actually had something. I was talking to Tom Galvin and Dave Westerling down at 19 Carter and Tom was talking about the interest in movies in town, that there was quite a lot. And we have been, also, folks have been asking about sort of beautification sort of things and the town cleanup. I was wondering if we would want to set up a fund of some sort to take some of the funds that are coming in from the movies.
At 19 Carter? Or where are these movies?
Just in general, the movies that are coming into town that we now have fees for.
Okay, I thought you were doing movies on Saturday night at 19 Carter.
No.
Sorry.
That's coming, that's on my list. Go ahead.
I honestly thought there was something like that.
The fees are coming in and they don't actually have a place to go. I was wondering if we wanted to set up a fund for things like fixing the signs down at the end of town that looked terrible, maybe putting some flowers in at town offices, townwide cleanup funding, these sorts of things. Since it, it's not a huge amount, I don't think that's going to come in, but it might be.
Something.
Something to put towards that effort, making down the town center look a little bit sprucier, that sort of thing. And it might encourage a committee to form if they actually had some funding to do things.
It's just general fund money, it'd be subject to appropriation, but that doesn't mean it can't be done.
Yeah, we could do a stabilization fund or we could do, June, June could help us out with something if this was a direction we wanted to go. So something to think about, maybe something to put on a future agenda.
Do you want to perhaps talk to June about it?
I have, she said we could certainly do that.
Oh, okay. All right, so you would like to put this on a future agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just throwing the idea out there as something to consider.
Okay. All righty, do you have anything else, Lisa?
Nope.
Peg?
I had a list.
Oh, boy.
I always have a list. Hey, no laughing. So had a chance to meet with Representative Naughton to talk to him about public safety in the center of town. Didn't want to have him do the mad dash across the street because there really weren't a lot of cars that day and I knew that he'd get to the other side. But he did say that he would talk to some folks about a traffic study, but also put the caveat in of, you may not like what the traffic study has to say, to which my response was.
Tom Galvin routinely says.
Right, to which my response was, people have brought up the issue, they're concerned, here's your solution, pick one side, you can't pick both. So I don't know when that will be done or, you know, a timeframe on it. He was going to go back and take it back yesterday, today, which is today, Monday. So I'll follow up with him by the end of the week and see where he is with that. And specifically, the crosswalk and then trying to come out of Pleasant to go on 62 that way and come out of South Street and go on 62 that way. I did ask him about CSX and the leftover railroad ties that are sitting on Linden, South Street. And then I noticed by the tracks too of the Uzia Blanka. I noticed that there were some old railroad ties there. And he had some concerns because CSX is under federal control and he said that.
Good luck with that.
Pretty much, pretty much. So I, I don't know what we can do to get rid of those ties. He was suggesting put a free sign on them and they might disappear overnight, but. But I mean, it's not our property to get rid of, unfortunately. But he said that he would look into that as well.
Well, we wouldn't be taking them.
Correct.
We'd just be putting the sign.
All right. Okay, I was just saying.
I think I, I think I hear that that's something you might be interested in.
I never said that I would or would not. I'm just putting it out there, just saying.
It's out there, she didn't put it up.
That is correct. My phone will be left at home, so I cannot be tracked as to my whereabouts, or I'll put it in your pocketbook, so. So it's, it's kind of, well, I have three more.
Okay, keep going.
So it's kind of funny, piggybacking on Lisa with the money because we had talked about, or I had talked about, possibly doing like a golfing event out at Burling Acres.
I think that's where I got the movie idea.
Probably, yes, because that's the next one that's going to come. So I said, why not? Why don't I reach out to the gal? I have no idea what would need to be done, the amount of effort to pull an outing together. Again, to benefit something in town, whether it's veterans, food pantry, council on aging, something. She's out of town this week, but I'm going to call her Friday.
Who's this again?
The lady at Burling Acres. Do you know her name?
Burling Country Club?
Where's Burling Acres?
Burling Country Club.
The old Pine Crest.
The old Pine Crest.
Stephanie.
Yes, probably her. So I'm going to talk to her later on in the week and at least get an idea of the effort to do this. And so while I was on a roll, I reached out to the rec department in Clinton because they do movies on the common and said, hey, what would we need to do and how much money would we need? And so she sent back some information that I saw, but I haven't read. But again, I'm just trying to get the community more involved to do things. And then possibly to do maybe an Easter egg hunt somewhere in town, you know, for the little ones, three to seven or whatever. So, I mean, these, these are my ideas. I'll run with them. I'll see what I can.
They all kind of fall under rec.
I know, but I did, but I did talk to rec and they said, awesome idea, awesome idea. We don't have anybody to run with them, so I'm going to run.
But you'd still, you'd go do that with rec, not the board necessarily.
Oh, no, no, so I just wanted to, no, I just wanted to tell you what I was.
The Lions Club used to do an Easter egg hunt.
Did they?
I thought so, I thought there was one that.
And unfortunately, sometimes it fell in the fishing derby and when the horn rang for the Easter egg hunt, the fishing derby, peoples just dropped their poles and all the kids ran for the cannon.
Well, you'd have all the people right there though.
That is correct.
And then they all did come back and finish fishing to get their prizes, but it was kind of funny.
All right, I can reach out to Lions Club and I'll reach out.
Tom Sharon, he's the one that used to run it.
Lions, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Dave Westerling is easy to get a hold of too. He's a lion.
Oh, Dave's a lion? Okay. All right.
Dave's a lion.
There you go.
Okay. And again, I'm not asking for permission from the board to do this. It was just in case you hear rumblings, you don't, you're not like, oh, what is she up to now?
You can use this forum to ask for volunteers to help with these things though.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I figured once I had more information either on the golfing outing or movies on the common, that I'd pull a meeting together and get people down there to try and get volunteers. And if we can do it, great. And if not, we tried and I'll continue to nag people, so. All right, I'm done. What?
Sorry.
You want to participate? You want to volunteer?
I think I saw your hand up.
I did, I saw both hands up. I second and I vote. What? Okay, I'm done.
All right. So we have had a couple of emails concerning the Wheeler Dam. And do we want to, do you want me, I guess, to give this woman a call or bring her in? And she's requesting a, a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I think we need to know a little bit more about what exactly she would like us to help her with.
Yeah, and this sounds like a really complicated issue. I'm not sure that even if we got to that point, you would want to do it here or maybe a, a meeting with the concerned parties because there are several.
Well, that was my question. Do you want, would you rather have a meeting with?
It'd be conservation.
Assessors.
Yeah.
Assessor, I mean, yeah, this is a huge, we're a whole.
So I'm just looking to see what your pleasure is.
I'm thinking if you can contact her and get a little bit more skinny and then maybe that's when you bring in conservation assessors and dentists and we can all.
Well, do you, I could even try to have a meeting like during the day or something.
Okay.
What was her name? Lisa? No.
Robin.
Rob, no, the other one, Leslie. There was a Leslie and a Robin. Okay. All right. And then department heads, monthly reports, how are we, how are we doing this? Do we want to have like five minutes for each person on the first Monday of each month?
I'd rather stagger them.
Stagger?
And give them enough time that if they have something, they have enough time to do it.
Yeah, because this is what Mary had passed out to everybody, just kind of like what's coming up. So if we could just fill in the blank for.
Okay.
The rest of this month and into March and then just rotate it.
Always assign some on the first, the second, the third, or the fourth Monday or week.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And I think I covered everything. Are we all set?
Are we done?
No one's up yet.
Just asking.
It's too early.
So you want somebody on the 11th, that would be next week. And you have a 7:05 and a 7:30. How much time do you want them to be given?
Let me look at that paper again. I think I can find it here somewhere.
I'd rather skip down to the 19th. I mean, if they're, if they're going to come in for like five, 10 minutes, I don't want to push them until like eight o'clock. I'd rather try and get them in, get them in, get them out.
Okay.
So they're going to have like on a standing rule, the 7:10 appointment might be for your department head?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So start on the 19th.
For a 10 minutes lot or 15 minutes lot?
Yeah.
The first one may take a little long until we all get into the groove of what we need and what we want and then I bet we can chop it down.
Okay.
All right. One question, one last question. So for this, for our stuff, for the Board of Selectmen Town Report, do you want edits? How do we want to get this so we can approve it on Monday?
She needs to send us out the copy, a clean copy, and then you would bring your edits on Monday.
Okay.
That's not, this is mine originally that has some of Chris's comments in it. So just accept them. You want to just take a look at them and accept them, Chris, and then send that out to everybody?
Sure.
Okay. You, you and I can clean it. She's good at editing.
Okay, all right.
I'll get, I'll get it closer.
And then we'll send it out clean?
Yep.
And then agree and finish it next week.
Okay. All right.
Same thing for this, right up on the Personnel Committee? The ones where you guys were the Personnel Committee before the Personnel Committee became a Personnel Committee?
I guess I would rather let the Personnel Committee start fresh and do their thing, but.
Did you do this or?
I did not.
Okay, Mary put this together, that's right.
I went through the year of pain, looking through all the minutes.
Right.
I plucked out the beginning half of the year where you were the Personnel Committee.
Well, what if we want to just, what if we, if there's things in here?
It's actually giving thanks to them for stepping up too. It's not just, you know.
Do you, are they going to do an annual report?
They did, they did for their half a year.
Then maybe.
Claire and I talked about this today.
Maybe there's things in here that we can just include in the Selectmen annual report because we were the Personnel for half a year.
Use our report to say thank you to the Personnel Committee for stepping up.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, awesome.
You don't need to do any of those.
Well, we can incorporate if there's things in there that we need to incorporate.
Either way.
Okay. This is yours?
Yeah.
I'm taking it.
I noticed.
Okay.
Hurry up, a lot of questions.
All right, all right, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, while Chris is looking through a reply.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Bradley.